April 23rd, 2018, or whatever year it is. The Cape Elizabeth Planning Board called to order. First order of business is approval of the minutes from February 26, 2018 meeting and the April 3, 2018 workshop. Do we want to handle them separately?
I move we approve the meetings as written.
Want to handle them together?
What's that?
Do you want to handle them together or separately?
Yes. How do I say that?
Okay, so we better do them separately. Okay, minutes from the February 26, 2018 meeting?
Move to accept.
All right, second? Go ahead, all right. All those in favor?
Do I have to abstain from that because I wasn't there as well?
Probably.
You don't have to. It's a ministerial function, so you can vote to approve them even if you weren't at the meeting.
I read the minutes, so.
Minutes from the April 3, 2018 workshop. Motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. I think we got every. I didn't notice if Andrew saw it or not. First order of business is 69 Beach Bluff Terrace private accessway permit. Peter Ware is requesting a 90-day extension of the approval granted December 19, 2017 for a private accessway to be create, to create access for a lot located at the rear of 69 Beach Bluff Terrace. Section 19-7-9, private accessways.
I have a motion for the board to consider.
Okay, go right ahead.
Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, that the approval granted to Peter Ware for a private access permit to create access for a lot located at the rear of 69 Beach Bluff Terrace at the December 19, 2017 meeting be extended 90 days to July 22, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Item number two, I will turn over to Joe.
All right, Global Acquisitions for LLC is requesting that the application for site plan review, resource protection permit, and shoreline zoning review to construct a 180-foot tall telecommunications tower to be located at 19 Wells Road be tabled to the May 15, 2018 meeting of the planning board. Anybody want a motion?
I have a motion for the board to consider. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Global Acquisitions for LLC for site plan review, resource protection permit, and shoreline zoning review to construct a 180-foot tall telecommunications tower to be located at 19 Wells Road be tabled to the May 15, 2018 meeting of the planning board.
Second?
My second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Next item on the agenda, Crosshill Boardwalk RP permit. Crosshill Boardwalk RP permit. The town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to construct up to 600 feet of four-foot wide boardwalk on existing Greenbelt Trail located northeast of Tiger Lily Lane. Section 19-8-3, resource protection permit, completeness and public hearing. And do you state your name and?
My name is Jim Tassie, and I'm a member of the Conservation Committee.
And give us an overview of the project?
Yep. So what we're looking to do is harden an area that is currently extremely muddy, and what's happening is that people are actually avoiding the town-owned trail corridor and encroaching on private landowners to the detriment of soils and conditions on their property as well. Our goal is to create a boardwalk that will not exceed 2,400 square feet that will be supported on what we call a crib-style footings, so it'll be a series of four-by-fours that are, yeah, my dumb, that are stacked on the ground. Estimated span of the longest stretch in the RP2 wetland is about 30 feet, and there'll be additional on-the-ground boardwalking of a type that we've used elsewhere in Cape Elizabeth.
Okay, now, we are looking at completeness of the application at this point in time?
Is that, I can't see very well, is that plan showing where the boardwalk is?
Yep, so the boardwalk would be, this, this, you can see the green here, this is a corridor that the town owns. The blue trail represents the trail. Where the trail goes into this area, it is extremely muddy, and something needs to be done to harden the trail to both protect.
It's just in that section, Tom?
That is, there's a number of bridges that have, you know, been put in previously in drier areas in that area, but this is the only one that falls within an RP2 wetland. So, yep, that's the only section.
We're going to open this up to the public with any questions on completeness of the application, and that is basically, do we have the information, at least the good foundation of information before us to then take this on to a decision at a later time? So would anyone like to speak to this application? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and open it up to the board for their questions regarding completeness. No questions regarding completeness. We're feeling good about completeness. Go ahead, Joe. Oh, you were just pulling your mic down. All right. If we feel we have a complete package here, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the town of Cape Elizabeth for a resource protection permit to build up to 600 linear feet of four-foot wide boardwalk on the existing trail located northeast of Tiger Lily Lane be deemed complete.
Do I have a second? Joe? All right, any further, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous? All right. The next order of business would be to open this up for public hearing on the project, the overall project. So does anyone want to comment on this particular project on any aspect of it? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to the board for their questions or comments regarding the project overall. Boy, we're quiet today.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll just make a comment that this has been thoroughly looked at by the town engineer, and as we all agree, these type of boardwalks are, there are quite a few throughout the community. They do keep people off and make it less muddy, so I do support this, just because I've seen them work so well, and I know this one will work also.
Any other comments?
You got a motion?
Go right ahead.
Motion for approval, findings of fact. The town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to build up to 600 linear feet of four-foot wide boardwalk on an existing trail located northeast of Tiger Lily Lane, which requires review for compliance with Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. Two, the town engineer recommends that the applicant confirm the need for any state or federal permits. Three, the application substantially complies with Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the town of Cape Elizabeth for a resource protection permit to build up to 600 linear feet of four-foot wide boardwalk on an existing trail located northeast of Tiger Lily Lane be approved with the following condition. One, that any, that the applicant obtain any required state or federal permits.
Do I have a second? Victoria, any further discussion?
Yeah, it seems we decided not to do a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah. I skipped right over that puppy, didn't I? Sorry.
I don't feel the need for one.
Okay, but we should go on the record saying we don't feel the need for one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. I have a feeling you're gonna sit down now. Next item on the agenda is, oops. Get my agenda out. Eight Auster Lane private road review. Margaret Berlum is requesting a private road review to create frontage on a lot located in Eight Auster Lane. Section 19-7-9, private road completeness. And we are doing, at this time, we are looking at completeness of the submission to make sure we have the materials, at least a good foundation of materials to move forward. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Maggie Berlum, and my spouse Noel and I currently live at 48 Spurwick Avenue in Cape Elizabeth with our two-year-old son Wallace and our five-year-old Donna Nora. And we purchased a buildable, non-conforming lot in our neighborhood. We're very excited to build our house there. And we are here tonight to apply for a private road extension coming off of the end of a public road at Eight, on, off of Auster Lane to acquire the remaining 80 feet of road frontage that we would need to have 100 feet of road frontage. Currently, we have 20 feet on Auster Lane. And so I'm gonna let our engineer handle presenting the extension to you tonight.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Steve Bradstreet with Ransom Consulting, representing the applicant for the design of this project. As Maggie had introduced the project, the lot currently has approximately 20 feet of frontage on a public way. It needs 100. So what we're doing is extending a private way off of the end of that public road to provide that additional frontage. With that, and through discussions with the town, what we are doing is the existing area right now is gravel. It is, has been undetermined exactly what the existing gravel buildup is. We were unsuccessful in finding town documents when that was inspected and whether or not it had adequate gravel for that. So what we're doing is we are totally removing that material, replacing it, grading it with a normal crown typical of a roadway, and providing drainage aspects, erosion patrol measurements, et cetera, in association with that 80 feet of road extension. What I'd like to do is just, because right now you are looking at completeness, I just wanted to give you an understanding of what we're looking at. It is the extension of a private road, often accepted public way, public road, to a buildable lot that currently is non-conforming because it does not have the frontage. Replacement of all the existing roadway infrastructure, stormwater improvements. Also, there will be a, obviously, driveway access to the site with a driveway culvert in it, or under it, and then public water, public sewer, and then underground power and communications brought to the site for the project also. There were two items in Maureen's letter to the board in regards to possible items of, that were incomplete. The first one is the monumentation. The monumentation that was in question was part of the, or not part, of the Cottage Brook subdivision approval. It was something that the town and the peer review engineer happened to miss in regards to the providing or asking for the monumentation. Bob Mally caught it this time, and so in discussions with him, there's two monuments that are required on either side of the Auster Lane at the end of the public road that would require monumentation. Orange granite monuments. The applicant is going to provide those, and will have them located by her surveyor, which is Owen Haskell. And also at the same time, our plans will refer to the surveyor's plan, just as part of the reference of the entire package. So in proximity, it's this property pin right here, a monument, and the one directly below it. Those two, there's no monumentation out there. There's not a pin, there's not a granite, there's nothing. That should have been part of the Cottage Brook subdivision approval. It isn't there. We are putting it in. So those two points, there and down here, will be added by the applicant. There was also a possibility of wetland delineation, or a question of whether or not there were wetlands in sight, and whether or not this was complete. Our applicant walked this site with Dick Sweet, obviously prior to his passing, and Dick Sweet indicated that no, there were no wetlands on this site. The applicant also then, or more recently, I should say, walked the site with Ben McDougall, the code enforcement officer for the town. He also confirmed that there were no wetlands located on site. And those, I believe, were documented, or at least the code enforcement officer's recollection of what, of no wetlands, has been documented in the town's files. So what we're doing tonight is just trying to understand or give you the information that you need to deem this project complete, so that it can move on from here. And those two primary aspects were the monumentation, we're gonna provide them. We're gonna show it on the plans, we're gonna note it on the plans. And then the wetland delineation in regards to our discussions or the applicant's discussions with the town, the town's code enforcement officer, who in years past did work for Dick Sweet. So with those two, we feel that those, that information provides the information that was in Maureen's letter to the board of possible incompleteness, and we feel that that now does make the application complete, and that's what we are asking for your approval tonight to deem it complete prior to going into any public conversation. Thank you. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up to the public for comment on completeness of the submission. And so if you would like to speak on this, please come to the podium, give your name and your address, and the, you have three minutes to speak, and Maureen will be timing you.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Henry Steinberg, 13 Hunts Point Row, and also for South Street. I noticed that there was a waiver asked for to do with traffic. If this is approved and the gate is removed, traffic from the 40 or 50-odd houses may or may not use that road, and extension thereof come down through South Street. Therefore, I think that a traffic survey is necessary. End of story from that part, point of view. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on completeness?
My name is Bob Danielson. I'm an attorney in Portland, and I represent Chris and Julie Muns, who live at 5 South Street. 5 South Street is directly across from the proposed project. I also had the comment about the traffic that Mr. Steinberg raised. There is currently a gate that runs across the road, and I'm uncertain as to whether the gate is going to be relocated or removed, because if it was removed, then I assume all the traffic from Auster Lane would continue down South Street and onto Stevenson and onto Spurwick, and I don't think those roads were designed for pass-through traffic from what is now Auster Lane. There's no driveway to this location shown on the plan. It's very important, because I don't know which side of the gate the driveway is proposed to be on. Is the driveway gonna be on the South Street side or the Auster Lane side? Because I assume there's gotta be some kind of turnaround if the gate is to remain. The third is, my client's property at 5 South Street exists under a private accessway permit. When the private accessway permit was granted for 5 South Street in 2004, South Street didn't extend all the way to Auster Lane. It only extended to, before my client's property. So my client was granted the private accessway, which, under the zoning ordinance, is limited to one lot. So now we're gonna have a private accessway limited to one lot on one side of the street, and Auster Lane extended on the other side of the street, and I don't quite understand how that jives in the zoning ordinance. And I guess that's all my comments on the completeness. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
So I'm Chris Muns. I live at 5 South Street. And this plan, and looking at this plan and not knowing where the gate would be is, and having no understanding that I live on an accessway, and the hammerhead that is depicted on there is very important to my house, not only from a house perspective because of it being an accessway and, you know, and the fact that I live on South Street, but then possibly could be exiting my road on Aster. But more importantly, it's around the safety of my child. I have a child who has intractable epilepsy, which, if you guys don't know about intractable epilepsy, it's med-resistant, so at any time he can have seizures. And we've had emergency vehicles at our house get confused from 911 calls, and it could be a matter of minutes of him going into static, which, you know, could really cause a lot of brain damage to him. And it could be the difference between getting him to the hospital in time or not, and not having that turnaround or adequate way for the vehicles to facilitate my house would be, be something that I really couldn't imagine passing something like this, not knowing where the, the gate would be or how we would manage emergency vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment period and open it up to the board for comment or questions.
Can I just say?
Regarding completeness?
Sorry. Ahead of this, I just wanted to disclose that I live on Auster Lane, 32 Auster Lane, on the other end of Auster Lane. I don't actually know the applicant personally. I don't abut the property, so, but I wanted to make that known, and I know the board has a process for determining whether I'm included in further processes or not, so.
What's the feeling of the board regarding Andrew's continued?
Do you feel you can be objective in evaluating this?
Yeah, I mean, I should also say, I mean, I actually heard about this through a neighborhood Facebook group we have. So I did know that, that this was gonna be, well, that the house was being proposed to be built there. I know, I mean, there's neighbors all around that I know, but I feel like I can be objective, you know, just based on the facts. That's my opinion, but.
Go ahead, Victoria. Did you happen to have any conversations with your neighbors?
Um, yeah, prior to, we have good friends that live in the neighborhood, so I did speak with them about it.
Prior to becoming a member of the board?
Yes, yep. Having just joined.
Yeah, having less than a month, right?
Yeah.
What's, what's everybody's feeling?
I don't see any problem.
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
Me either. So we will welcome you to continue.
Okay, thanks.
Figure you, you know the rules as far as, okay. All right, any other?
I have a question for the applicant. Couple comments said that the gate's not shown on the plans, and there's a drive, a turnaround, a hammerhead rather, not shown. I, I see gate, I mean, is that not correct, or?
Where's the slide forward, Maureen?
You mean in large? I think you want to use the plus sign up on the top left.
My eyes, is that the plus?
Right there, yeah.
Thank you.
Just click on it.
There we go.
And then you just.
What I'll do is, I'll go to the second sheet, a little bit more accurate or larger. There we go. So this is at a, twice a scale. Shows the stippled area, that is the existing road that is being replaced, regraded, and then, as you can see, ditched. It also shows a note where a gate would be placed, based on conversations with the town and with the fire chief. That is not the, not preferred at all, to have a gate in there at all. And so that would be, because we couldn't change our plans before we came to the board meeting tonight, that is being removed. So there will be no gate on that location at all. So the gate is being removed.
All right, and then the other, is there a hammerhead there? Is that what that, what's that paved area underneath?
The paved area is the Muns driveway off on Auster Lane. You can see the, the public turnaround there, and in discussions with the fire chief, that was totally acceptable with the public turnaround on the right-hand side of the plan, shown right here.
So that turnaround does not exist today?
This one does. This is a, was part of the Cottage Brook project. It was, is a paved turnaround.
What about, what about the turnaround that is currently on the other side of the gate?
There's an existing one right here that I believe was part of the Muns' approval for the extension of South Street. This was put in. We're not touching that. Where all of our access and all of our road improvements are stopped at the edge of the gravel.
You know the rules. You know the rules. Well, there are, there will be more time for comment on this. This is not ending tonight by any means. So you will have an opportunity to comment on new information that may come to light either tonight. Henry? Sorry? Not yet. Okay. Does that answer your questions? Now, you're giving us new information here. You, the police chief and fire chief, are indicating that they would prefer not to have a gate at the end of South Street.
I'm speaking only for the fire chief right now.
Only for the fire chief?
Right.
Okay.
Fire and rescue.
All right. So that, okay. Go ahead, Victoria. You look like you want to say something.
Those two had their hands up first.
All right.
If you could clarify, the applicant is saying as far as the applicant's concerned, they're happy to go along with the idea of no gate. So the gate, unless there's another reason to have it, is it not gonna be there? Is that your, your position?
That is correct. I know it's new information, but it was, we were asked about the gate, and I offered that up because of our discussions with the fire chief. that up because of discussions with the fire chief and the town.
And was the gate not part of the Cottagebrook subdivision?
No, it's not. That gate was not part of the approved plans for Cottagebrook.
There is no gate, no barrier shown there of any type?
There is one, there's an existing one. It was not part of the approved subdivision plan.
Why? Why does it exist?
Okay. Maureen, go ahead, jump on in.
So there was only one gate that was ever approved for Spurwick Woods Cottagebrook, and it's on Chicory Way. That's the only thing that the planning board ever approved. Subsequent to the planning board's approval, there were some concerns raised about people getting lost and driving on South Street, and the police chief decided that the chain across the end of South Street would be installed. It is, the chain that's there right now is not part of planning board approval.
What year is that?
I don't know. It's been in there for a while.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I noted that, I think there's supposed to be a maintenance, repair, and plowing note on the plans. I didn't see that. If it's a private accessway or a private road, that basically the town won't do any of that maintenance for the.
If that is a standing note of the town's, then it would be put on the final documents. That's correct.
Go ahead.
I got a couple of questions. So it seems to me you've got a turnaround on each side of the street. Is that what it is? Both on the same side of the chain? Am I reading that correctly?
No.
Based on what this plan shows, that, that would be correct, but that is new information, that that is not going to be placed.
Why do we have two turnarounds in the same?
Because, you want me to add? Okay. So the property that's owned by Mr. Muns was originally owned by Philip Nedwell.
Okay.
And when he came in, it was a vacant lot, and it was at the end of the private road known as South Street. And so in order to make the lot buildable, you need to have frontage on a town-accepted road, or you need to get a private accessway permit or a private road approval.
Okay.
So in 2004, thereabouts, the Nedwells got, obtained from the planning board, a private accessway approval.
Okay.
And as part of those approvals, you have to have a turnaround for emergency vehicles. There was no chain that was included as part of that approval, because at that time, Astrolane did not exist. And even when it was, even when Hamlin Street was constructed, there were still shrubs, trees at the end. So there wasn't a physical connection between what we now know as South Street and Astrolane.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Maureen, if I understand you correctly, then solely in terms of completeness, if they're not proposing to have a chain, then the information we have is what it is. The substantive point of should there be a chain is for the next phase of the proceeding. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, the thing with the chain is, whenever you create a dead end, you need to find a way for emergency vehicles to turn around. So if a chain or some other blockage is proposed, then there needs to be a turnaround that's adequate for the fire truck. If no gate or chain is proposed, then South Street really is acceptable for the fire chief to be able to move his equipment, and he has personally told me that.
But in terms of whether there ought to be a barrier, there is some type between the public way and the private way of South Street, that's a substantive issue for the approval of all the merits.
That could easily be a substantive issue, absolutely.
Well, let's turn into another Broadcove chain.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Victoria.
Sorry.
I actually, everyone's covered my issues under.
Under completeness?
Yeah, under completeness, yeah. So I'm also.
Go ahead.
I do have another question. It appears, there's doubt in my mind about the, I'm doing a word search, the appropriateness or the size of the rain pond proposed on the land.
Yeah.
But they provided one. That means it's complete. Whether we agree with it is a different subject.
Whether we ask them to enlarge it or not is the next phase of the.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, well, I think we have to address, given the fact that we had received plans that basically had a gate being moved, but now we're sitting here and we're being told that the applicant is requesting no gate.
I'll correct you on that. In reading through the submission, what I saw was a proposal to move the gate if the town deemed it necessary or town required it. I read that in there somewhere. Don't ask me where it is.
I guess that's what I saw too, but I was at the break.
We are hearing just tonight that the fire chief is.
Yeah, but the only reason I bring that up is that two members of the public brought up whether or not a traffic study that they're requesting a waiver on. At first, I didn't think that there would need to have a traffic study, and I'm kind of leaning towards not needing a traffic study, but given that this is a house, but I just did want to bring that up since the public did bring that to our attention.
So we can't. Thank you. So do we want to move ahead with our?
Can I make a comment? Yeah, I think that's a really good point that.
The traffic study?
It's possible. If that's going to be open, that should definitely be studied. It is a shift in the existing traffic pattern.
Go ahead.
And I don't see the need for the traffic study because it's, you're looking for shortcuts, and I think the only person that would see it as a shortcut are the few neighbors that live right there on that part of Aster. I don't see the others going down. Excuse me, please. If there is signage that is put up saying this is not a through street, that this is a private street for residents only, there's other ways to take care of that, and then it becomes law enforcement.
But you can poll the rest of the members if they want a traffic study. Go ahead, Peter.
I mean, John does make a good point. I think we have sort of a chicken and egg problem here. If there is to be no barrier, then the possibility of additional traffic may suggest a need for a traffic study. If we determine that there should be a barrier there for substantive reasons, including not having the traffic flow, then there is none. So I would say that we would treat that as something ancillary to a determination by the board that there would be no barrier, in which case we might want to defer the final decision until there was a traffic study. If there's some type of barrier or discouragement of through passage, then I think that's probably not required.
So are you suggesting that traffic studies should not, at this time, impact completeness?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
I would agree with that, because I'm going to withhold my judgment until I should do a site walk to see if I would think a traffic study would be necessary. Because right now, I agree with Peter.
Go ahead, John.
And I just want to point out, when we got this at the workshop and we looked at it and through the materials, I mean, I understand that the language is that if the town requested, but I was sort of under the assumption, and maybe that was my fault for assuming something, but that this gate, if it was going to be moved, that there was going to be a gate. To physically deter people from using Cell Street as an extension of Astrolane. So I think we owe it to the residents of Cell Street to at least operate, and I agree with what Peter and Jim are saying about, I don't know if a traffic study is necessary right now, but if all of a sudden we are faced with a complete removal of that chain to deter traffic going through, then I think that that might be something that we have to relook at.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, Maureen, procedurally, can we, if we grant completeness now with the waiver for the vehicle, for the traffic study?
Right. The way that you've always handled completeness is that has information been submitted is different from is the information adequate? So you still have standards under your subdivision, private access, private road review that talk about traffic circulation. I believe you have the authority to require a traffic study at a later date, even if you deemed it complete now. Is that the question you asked?
Yes.
Given that caveat, I would be okay with saying it's complete.
Somebody want to make a motion? Are we done? First, I should say, any other comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion for the board to consider, motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application Margaret Berlum for review of a private road extension from Astrolane to create road frontage for the lot located at A to Astrolane be deemed complete.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Do we have any, we can move on to a couple of things. One is any substantive questions regarding the plan? Go already ahead, Victoria.
There was a little bit about, I'm going to take that back, because the engineer, town engineer, did talk about drainage.
Yes.
And so I would like to discuss, if you, there are a couple of things that are in the town engineer's letter. If you don't mind touching on.
No, that's not.
Town engineer's letter.
Yes, of course.
That's okay.
Those were my questions, too. Thank you.
Anything in particular that you'd like to hit on? His first three comments are his general comments. Indicating what is in the package, what we're looking for approvals. They don't have a whole lot of substance or request. The only thing that he does say is that, he says, "Some of the following comments could be considered beyond completeness level." So that's where he sort of initiates that process of getting us going forward. Those are primarily the, and then talking about waivers, which in discussing with the fire chief and the town, that's why we were asking the waivers for the 22 and the 18. As you go beyond that, if you're looking at item number four, he's asking that we should recommend, he is saying that we should look at a waiver request for that. And that would be part of an additional submittal. We have another submittal by the end of this week to get back before you. So those type of things will be asked for. We already had a list of waivers that is in the package. There are some others that are being recommended.
Such as that one?
Such as that one.
Thank you.
The next one is the road right-of-way. Typically, roads are located at centerline of the right-of-way. We have a road, public road, that is built to that standard and private that is not, and we're trying to match. So we cannot physically meet that requirement because one of the roads is off centerline, and we have to blend to match that. And so I think that is an easy explanation that we can discuss with SABACO technics and the town in regards to the waiver. That was number five. Number six, enclosed drainage system. What we had discussed with the town is just this, replacement of the existing gravel, not extending the public road, which would require the curbing, et cetera, and all the other requirements of a public road standard. We are not requiring, we are not requesting that. This is what we're requesting, which has the ditches on it, which has been at least vetted through the town staff and would be, what would be acceptable. Number seven, a little confusing, he stated that since a minimal increase in new impervious, there's no increase in new impervious. I've taken the existing road out, put the existing road back in, just of the correct depths in gravel. So I'm a little unclear as to where that increase is, but as he goes in there, he says that he agrees with us, that because of the impact, the square foot area, that no stormwater analysis is necessary. Based on that, and that's where we came into this project a long time ago, is stormwater requirements are not necessary. The calculations for stormwater quantity and quality are not necessary for the minimal impact of these road improvements. But what we try to do is to provide some means of, all right, let's offer something up.